Before we move on to the formal business, I just want to say, if I get emotional, it's a year tonight since my mum last sat in this chamber. So I will apologise now. And I've also got a few things to say. So, ladies and gentlemen, can I welcome you all to the annual meeting of Spennymo Town Council? Prior to the formal business of the meeting, I would like to say a few words before I present the proceeds of my charity appeal to the representatives of the nominated charities. Fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I feel honoured, proud and privileged to have served as town mayor for the last year. A year ago, I undertook the service of town to the best of my ability to undertake the greatest good for the greatest number, and I hope I have done that. I have attended 132 civic events, 86 in the town and 46 elsewhere in the North East, and I have travelled in excess of 1,317 miles on civic business out and around the parish, not including the 13.1 miles which I ran for the Great Half-More. Walked and walked. Stared. I have very much enjoyed events around the town while trying to extort the sense of community and wellbeing. I have enjoyed making school visits and the visit to Cowden with Oxford School Council was a brilliant day. I have visited 10 people celebrating significant birthdays, three couples celebrating wedding anniversaries, opened numerous autumn Christmas and spring fairs, and of course, not forgetting Spennymo Gala Day, celebrating 60 years with the gala is amazing and may continue for another 60 years. Two of the most important events in this town, our drumhead service and Remembrance Day. And I would like to thank Spennymo Town Band, D Company Rivals and the Cadets for their immense presence at these important occasions, which was an honour for me as the mayor to play a major role in. And I've got to add that, my daughter was asked what she felt was one of the most important occasions, she being to violate her, and she said it was a drumhead service, which was just incredible. Two of the most important... Oh, sorry. Outside of Spennymo, I have been proud to come over to town at locations all over the North East, from Gateshead and South Tyneside down to Darlington and Barnet Castle and most council areas between. I was privileged to be invited to represent Spennymo to join the Mayor of Durham City and Chairman of Durham County Council, as well as numerous law coaches and national politicians and supporters of our mining communities on the balcony of County Hall to celebrate Durham Mines Gala, something I have been attending for the past 60 years, and I don't look 60, but I am. I would like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Smith for organising this invite, which was a very special honour for me. My year as your mayor has been an honour and a privilege, and I would like to express my thanks to certain people who have been particularly supportive. First, I would like to thank the Deputy Mayor, councillor Taylor, for his support. The Leader, councillor Geldard, who I believe has attended all of my fundraising and awareness events in the town. And all members from both sides of the chamber for their help and support during this year. A big thank you. Second, I would like to thank the Town Club, all of the office staff, caretakers and council staff who supported mine and town council events all of the year. Thank you also to Spennymo Businesses for their support with Tom Borra and Raffle Prizes. Thank you to the residents of Paris Park for not only making my lunches fancied once a month, but also helping fundraise for my charities and just telling it all, I'll be coming back. Also, a special thanks to Hugh Stevenson for supporting my charities and fundraising for them. I want to take this opportunity to thank the editor-in-chief, George Martin, and his team of volunteers who have supported our events so extensively. My special thanks goes to someone who has been exceptionally supportive. Officially, he's the town council photographer, but in practice, he is much, much more than that. He has advised me of where I should be. He has kept me... George Martin's laughing, but you know how true that is, no offence. He has kept me on schedule and so many other things, in fact, far too many to mention. And I just want to say really thank you, George, it's been an absolute pleasure. I'm not allowed to miss some organisations and people out, but to them, I also say thank you, and you all know who you are. As I announced last year, my two charities were to be Paris UK and Spennymo Dementia Friends. The Paris has launched in Spennymo last September when a number of young people from Spennymo were in this train, and they have been out and about across Spennymo talking to young people about suicide awareness, and they will continue to do this. I would now like to ask Jed Gold, who is CEO of the Paris UK, to come forward to receive the cheque. Can I just say, this is a real surprise, this is up in the chat possibly now. As we don't know how much we've raised all the year, and as you know, this year I chose two charities. So Jed, this is a prize for me, this is for you. For the Paris £4,166.58. It's too bad, George. Do you want to... If you want to, I'd love to do this.
I want to say this very simply, to all the presents, beyond no illusion, every one pound there says a life. There were 6,200 suicides in England, Wales, Northern Ireland and Scotland last year. 1,600 of those were aged under 35. Every day we hear hundreds of voices who are desperate to live, just don't know how. This makes a huge difference, this said to us, or to all of you, and particularly to our wonderful aunt Goldie there. Huge thanks, thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Spennymo Dementia Friends came about because of my and other people's passion to help people living with dementia in their care. Came about because of my dad had dementia. We are now an accredited dementia-friendly community, the second only in County Durham and the first to be recognised as an accredited dementia-friendly community. I've worked long and hard for this, and I just hope that the people who will come along behind me will continue to do that. I do get emotional, as it is really, you know, on the balcony, and this is why I have done it. And I want to ask Gary Clayton to come up and accept the cheque on behalf of Spennymo Dementia Friends, please. Same amount.
Hi, I want to go to my name to go ahead. We came before with Spennymo Dementia Friends, you were part of it. But what we feel that I'd like to tell is that I've died in order with early onset dementia. Spennymo Dementia Friends is not just for the people living with dementia, but helps people who are caring for them. We hope that this money can keep things going in Spennymo. Like game for the brain, singing for the brain, also work with what to get the community garden, carers' caps, anything else that we can do to help. I know I've questioned the pockets about the project, and I thank everyone who's supported Spennymo Dementia Friends to raise the money, put dementia awareness across Spennymo and along May County You.
Forrest's son is amazing, that woman, I've got a couple of other little things I want to present. Neville, will you come forward, please? Neville, that has been with me on numerous occasions as my consort, and I just want to say thank you. He's represented Spennymo, and he's been true gentleman about his family, pretty much, I'll be back next time. And George? I don't know who you're going to get, who are you going to get, say this one.
I'll do it.
Okay. Get him, get him, space. See him, this is up here. Finally, and last but not least, my very special thanks has to go to two very special people in my life. My daughter, my daughter, sorry. Also, thanks to my sister. Also, thanks to my sister for being sitting. That enabled, that enabled obviously the kinder to come out and support me. For the time given, back pocketing and promoting my charities and the town council. Now, all of Spennymo around the North East, I couldn't have done this year without them. He's amazing, he's the town. My outside, George. I forgot my... And I didn't do this on purpose. Thank you for being my consort now. Well now, seeing the agenda, the election of town mayor.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Lee.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Mayor, Lady of the Council, it is now my pleasure and privilege to perform the formal thanks to you and your many consorts. You and the past year. Councillor, congratulations, you on a tremendous amount, you've recently chosen charities, Spennymo Dementia Friends and the Paris UK. In supporting these two charities, you brought two excellent causes to the forefront of community life in Spennymo. This year, not only have you supported the local charities, but you've created one. You should be particularly proud of your efforts with Spennymo Dementia Friends, especially in the work that your uncles have done to make Spennymo the first accredited dementia-friendly town in County Durham. Without a doubt, your parents would have been very proud. On behalf of the council, can I thank both you and the consorts for the manner in which you discharged your duties. This year, we've been in the stocks of the gala, and most recently, we've taken part in the first ever Mayor versus Leader Pileupack at the Spennymo Family Fund Day. You've brought a much-needed breath of fresh air to the role of town mayor, which I know has been greatly received by all you've met through the interim office. And I finally thank you for the support you've provided me and my role as the Leader of the Council in what sometimes has been a very challenging year. But, on behalf of myself and the council, many thanks.
Now we'll move to item one, which is the election of town mayor. To elect the town mayor for the ensuing year.
Madam Mayor, from the council's position, Jack, it would give me great pleasure to nominate councillor Derek Taylor as Mayor for the forthcoming year. He's been Deputy Mayor for the last twelve months, and I bet you confidence he will have an excellent year as Mayor.
And we, the councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it does give me great pleasure to second this nomination. I endorse everything what councillor Lawton has said. No injury, if you like, you are, and you have represented this town. It's been a credit to you and our town, and I'm sure Derek will have formed your footsteps and even make a good example as well.
And we are in the nominations. And therefore declare that councillor Derek Taylor will be appointed as town mayor for the ensuing year. Forrest, would you like to come forward, please, and we see these files? Forrest is going to be councillor, Taylor's consort for the year.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you please give standing while the town mayor, councillor Derek Taylor, agrees to sign in the morning, he's waiting for one. I, Derek Taylor, having been elected to the office of town mayor, hereby declare that I take that job as upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the rest of my judgement. I undertake what serves the court as the conduct which is expected of members of the Spennymo Town Council. This declaration is made before me, signed by me, on the 24th of May 2016. Thank you. Retiring there, fellow councillors, officers and members of the public. In 2013, when I was asked by councillor Andrew Smith if I would stand for election, that forthcoming election, it never crossed my mind that I would be anything other than a world councillor. However, here we are in 2016, and this evening, you have given me the great honour of maintaining Mayor Spennymo, a home town for almost 40 years. I'd like to thank my proposal and the sector, but also thank everyone very much for this time. While the pleasant duties of the mayor include meeting local people at significant times in their lives and perhaps presenting them with flowers, it also gives the mayor the option to raise funds for their favorite charities. So, during my mayorial term, I intend to make as much as possible for two charities which I have supported personally for many years, both doing valuable but entirely different work. The two I have chosen are the National Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Children and the Gherka Welfare Trust. The NSPCC is far more proactive than it ever suggests. I've had a meeting with Mr. Nihad Shidditch, who is based in Bishopoff and is with us tonight. And he gave me the idea to work their carry out in families' schools in Spennymo concerning abuse awareness and also the help lines they run for troubled prisoners who could be potential victims of suicide. Nihad has agreed to come to future full council meeting and give us a short presentation. My second charity, the Gherka Welfare Trust, was originally set up to help ex-servants and their families in Nepal who were serviceably deliberately curtailed so they wouldn't qualify for a British army pension. As well as a wanting pension currently worth about £58,000, that's my government group pay for it. The trust is also involved in improving sanitation and providing more supplies in schools in more areas. They've also been heavily involved providing aid and assistance after the recent earthquake. The trust headquarter and chosen reason, don't have a representative here tonight, but I am meeting an officer from there on June 6th. We've also graded Arnold Sanderson, who served there, representing him on the day-to-day basis. However, Arnold probably hated it because he had a pride that can be easily put on his garden. Mr. Workman's about to die already. And we've fallen between as much as I can to these two causes, and I hope I shall have all of that quite to notice. Thank you. Before continuing with the agenda, I would like last to retire in that, come forward and receive a gift of appreciation for all the work she has done during the time of office, which I'm sure largely will be an excellent year.
You know what I'm saying, say, oh, you know what? Oh, wow, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Long distance service. Not doing any, eat a ball, eat a ball. Thank you very much. To the agenda, item two, Deputy Town Mayor, to elect the Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year. Over that, we wait nominations for the position Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year.
Mister Mayor, fellow councillor, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure once again to nominate my friend and colleague councillor Pat Lawton for the role of Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year. The role of Spennymo Town Mayor is at times an intensely challenging one. Mister Mayor, and I believe it imperative that in the year ahead, you receive the best support possible from the council in distance from you. And to that end, I say no better resolution than to provide you with a deputy with experience, commitment, and most importantly, considerable energy to bring to this great hall. Those are certainly qualities which you will benefit from councillor Lawton as your deputy. I formally move councillor Pat Lawton as Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year.
Mister Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to second councillor Pat Lawton for the position of Deputy Mayor for the ensuing year. You actually be a credit to yourself and the town for all of this.
Review of the nominations, sorry. And therefore, if elected, councillor Pat Lawton, the appointment as Deputy Town Mayor for the ensuing year.
I'd just like to thank my partner in second there. Ian, I don't want to say about not hearing that thing on Saturday. And this council to give it me this opportunity to once again represent Spennymo within the Deputy Mayor's role. I will support my man Derek Taylor, his consort, and promote this town to the best of my ability within this role. Thank you.
I would like to do three apologies.
Councillors Lagoff, Smith and Thompson.
Item four, to elect a leader and deputy leader of the council for the ensuing year. I perform the address to elect a leader and deputy leader of the council for the ensuing year. Can I invite nominations of the position leader of the council?
Mister Mayor, I would like to move councillor Ian Geldard as leader for the forthcoming year.
And you, Mayor, yes, I would like to second councillor Geldard for leader of the council. It's an important role being leader, guiding the council through the decision-making process and at the same time taking into account the public purse. The journey of responsibility councillor Geldard began two years ago when he became leader of the council, and I'm sure will continue to do so when he accepts the position tonight.
As stated at last year's annual meeting, members of the independent group do not recognise the position of leader, and the same comments will also apply to the position of deputy leader. We acknowledge that the elected mayor is the statutory authority of this council. We are not accountable to a leader or deputy leader of the majority group who were both elected and appointed by members of their own party. Spennymo independents have not participated in the election of either positions. These positions are also documented by the National Association of Local Councils, of which this council is a member, and not one of the... political group, and no other political group on any council business. He or she has no formal standing other than any other council. I'm sorry, but we do not recognise the positions of leader or deputy leader. And I would like to request a named and recorded vote and for my comments to be recorded in the minutes, which I will provide to all.
Thank you, supervisor. Our centre chair. And there are no nominations? And therefore declare councillor Gallagher the appointed as leader of the council for the ensuing year. I think all in fair pressure.
Chair also noted that councillor Gallagher voted for his son.
Point of order is quite a lot, councillor. Mister Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to accept the nomination to continue with the leader of the council for the 13th second year. I'll continue to execute my duties as the leader of the council with utmost commitment and devotion for the benefit of this town and its residents. And I begin by thanking my proposer councillor John Parkin and my secondor councillor Jim Graham for their continued support and hard work as members of this authority. These two members have held the longest serving on the council, councillor Graham having been first elected in 1987, and councillor Parkin in 1984, making them all very own father of the chair there. To a very impressive length of service, Mister Mayor, and he's got your madam mayor there, it'll be useful for that one, I'll appear and they continue. Mister Mayor, this past year has been a particularly challenging one for this council, and as such can I thank our team of officers, many of whom have only been in short time with this organisation, for their great commitment and excellent level of hard work. I would like in particular tribute to the efforts of our facility manager. Whilst covering his usual duties of day-to-day facility management, not least in ensuring Spennymore Town Hall remains a premier function venue in the county, Mister Anderson stepped up to the plate in covering the unfortunate absence of our town clerk, and I'm especially grateful for Mister Anderson's effort. It's customary in this state, Mister Mayor, for the leader of the council to provide a review of the previous year, and I cannot do so without paying tribute to my predecessor, councillor Ian Harrington, who sadly died during this civic year. Ian was a great man who was widely liked and respected in this community. He was a Yorkshireman and he became an adopted son of Spennymore. In addition to holding the office of town mayor from 2008 to 2009, he was the immediate past leader of this council, serving four years from 2010 until he nominated a major table over the goal in 2014. He was an exceptionally intelligent councillor who led this authority with great integrity and determination. He was a traditional man, but he knew the importance of moving with the times. It was what should have been in his role as the leader which inspired major standards for council, and it was his mentoring that ignited my aspirations for this office. In my first year of the leader of the council, Ian was a great source of experience and guidance, and I undoubtedly miss him over the past seven months. I'm sure the whole town will join me today in paying tribute to a great man. Mister Mayor, we know this is a time of greater story for the people of this town at the hand of the current government, and we know that everyone is now feeling a pinch. Because of this, it has become more important than ever for this council to provide value fully for our residents and focus our spending priorities on the priorities of the people of Spennymore. To that end, we completed a town-wide community consultation exercise last summer, asking residents to tell us which of our services they were more bothered about, which of our services they saw as priorities for spending going forward. Two clear priorities were identified, community events and children's play areas. Having listened to the people, we have this year doubled our budget for organising and supporting community events. Once again, we have been responsible for some excellent events throughout the year. These have included our first live music event, Party in the Park, our town shore, the fireworks display, the Christmas lights switch on and the Durham Brass Festival. All free eventry and all attended by hundreds of people, once again bringing this community together, putting Spennymore on the map and driving our local economy. Next week, we hope to receive final planning approval for the much awaited Spennymore Skate Park. In following consultation, we also hope to bring proposals to council to reinstate play areas with fly tourists and Tula oval park and to further extend our play provision in Middleston Mua. In this civic year, we also agreed to substantial meeting terms plan of building works and structural repairs right across the town, from the community centres of Tula and Middleston Mua to the village halls of Byers Green and Fairbury. This will see all of our community buildings renovated to a high standard over the course of the next two years, with work starting this summer. At a time when we know people have less money in their pockets, as the country's largest allotment provides per population, we have reduced our allotment rent for all of our tenants. We've also continued to support Spennymore's local sport clubs, having provided financial backing to numerous clubs and individuals once again, to ensure that our young people, whether footballers, gymnasts, boxers or swimmers, can realise their full potential in this town. We remain the proud landlords of Spennymore Football Club, who have once again achieved greatly success in the promotion to the Eurostick Premier Division. Having been approached by local officials, I look forward to bringing proposals to council soon on how best we can support the club in celebrating this success. And in assisting the futures of our young people who are not quite so supportive, we have provided significant support to the Spennymore Youth Band and indeed the Spennymore Town Band, not least in continuing to provide the band with accommodation free charge within this building itself. We continue to hold this town hall as a beacon of tourism in the town, with the Bob Abbey Art Gallery and the Durham Nighting Museum attracting hundreds of visitors from around the world every year. The Norman Cornish exhibition within our art gallery has put the town hall and indeed Spennymore squarely on the cultural map of County Durham. Exciting proposals are on the horizon for a Norman Cornish heritage trail around the town, and we will work in partnership with Durham County Council and the Cornish family on this great project. One fantastic place of attracting people to our town hall is the effect this has on our local economy, and with town centre regeneration as a known priority of the people of Spennymore, this council continues to force a full complement of shops within this building at the lowest rent levels in the town, and we were pleased to have the great cause the Salm and Conde Force of County Cancer Trust join our list of tenants earlier this year. With the long-winded regeneration of the festival walk area also recently announced, there is a bright future ahead for our town centre. Finally, last month, we engaged a local website designer to provide a full overhaul of our town council website, which is much needed and will provide us with a first-class modern web presence so that we can better engage with the public. Mister Mayor, it is my view that the need for town councils has never been stronger. The principal authorities saying that budgets decrease by hundreds of millions of pounds and must hold on dearly to our town council in order to protect those services which we know are important to our residents. All those great things I have already spoken of, our Jubilee Park, our Walkman and cemeteries, our community centres and village halls, and our extensive programme of community events and much, much more, would all be under threat of extinction without this town council. But we also know that this comes at a cost to our taxpayers, and that's why we ensure a value for money in everything that we do. Whilst we have increased service budgets this year and we have increased our capital spending, we have made huge savings of around £140,000 per year in back office and staff costs with absolutely no redundancies. At a time when other councils could only dream of doing so, we have frozen out a portion of council tax for this current year. In a period which saw other North East councils apply massive increases of six and seven per cent, this council has applied a zero per cent council tax increase. Through financial prudency of this council, we provided more with no extra cost. Mister Mayor, when we came later in this authority back in 2014, I've got to work immediately on a council vision, a list of aims for this council to achieve. It is this vision which has fuelled the success and development of this council, but I am of a firm belief that we must not stop to rest and we must continue to work hard and achieve more for this town. In this last year before the local government elections, we will ensure that the last building blocks of the council vision come together. To conclude, Mister Mayor, I would like to express how much of a privilege I am and how proud I am to continue my role as the leader of this authority. This year, we will continue to invest in the future of our young people. We will continue to provide funding to help our elderly and those most in need, and we will continue to be financially prudent during the time of austerity to pass our savings down to our residents, keeping our council tax as low as possible. Most importantly, Mister Mayor, we will build on our success to make Spennymore even greater than our Mr. Thank you.
Chair, I wish to make a response to councillor Gallagher. And I'd like to comment to about the services of the local house in here, a year. I would like to have our figures substantiated. It'd be excellent news if it was, but I would like to have that substantiated. And as well as that, I look forward to getting the information on all of the items and vision out in councillors' initial proposals and to see this as completed. It will be a benefit to the town, I just hope that it does secure that vision. Thank you.
Can I now invite nominations for the position of deputy leader of the council?
Mister Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to nominate my good friend and colleague councillor Stephen Jones for the role of deputy leader of the council for the ensuing year. I've known Steve for a considerable amount of years, our friendship, our previous days I worked in Spennymore Town Council. Steve was elected last year in the by-election to the most decisive role that resulted in any of us, over fifty per cent of the vote against three other candidates, increasing our majority on this council at that time when our opposition for our people believed that our support was dwindling. I know Steve of the amount of great integrity and passion and most importantly loyalty, values which have served him well as a councillor and will continue to serve him well in his role as deputy leader. I will post you with him in his new role as we continue to drive this council towards success.
Mister Mayor, I would like to report here that Stephen Jones is our position deputy leader. Are there any nominations? And therefore declare this councillor Stephen Jones the appointed as deputy leader of the council for the ensuing year.
Mister Mayor, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen, it's a great honour to be appointed deputy leader of Spennymore Town Council for the ensuing year. For start, I thank my proposer and my secondor, and also thank all other members for my help in my first term as town councillor. I pledge to commit my best efforts and time to the duties of all of deputy leader, and supporting the leader and of course all the members.
Item five, the standing committees. Part A of this item is to appoint standing committees for the following year.
Mister Mayor, remember to recall that last year, the council considered a number of proposals to reorganise our committee structure to ensure effective and efficient work as this council going forward. Following the first year of a new system of standing committees, we've not stood still. Last month, we dropped proposals to the council to merge existing facilities and recreation committees together to allow for further savings to be made, both in time and in resource. The council have therefore agreed to move forward this year with a two-committee structure. The first of these committees remains unchanged, the Policy and Resources Committee. This committee will continue to control the administration, finance and ICT of the council, and on top of that, the committee has the scope to cover consultations with and reports from external bodies, including the County Council and the National Association of Local Councillors. The second committee will be a new facilities and recreation committee, which will oversee the operation of all of our council's key services, the town hall, our community centres, our eight-hundred-strong allotment estate, Jubilee Park and our public open spaces. This committee will also have the responsibility for extending our civic event programme, which will include the town shore, Party in the Park and the fireworks display, along with our support for the Spennymore Gala and Durham Nighting Gala. Mister Mayor, with that explanation, I am delighted to formally move the standing committees as defined.
I'd like us to be in a room to record the standing committees, which were the Policy and Resources and Facilities and Recreation Committee. When this recommendation came before the council just on the two weeks ago on the minute 1:17:16 democratic review, our members abstained from voting, believing that the reduction in the number of standing committees will be disadvantageous to the democratic process and delegating a greater level of authority and responsibility for council business to a select few individuals who, except themselves, have no powers over the goal, any other member. We do not believe that reducing the size of these committees will be of benefit to the decision-making and democratic process. As I've said, I would like to have a named and recorded vote on these. And additionally, under the item five being which will follow, I would like to ask...
Pardon, chairman, number five there, yes.
I'm quite aware of that, councillor Gallagher, but if you would allow me to speak, the standing committees do not cover the subcommittees. I would like to step under five A in addition to the subcommittee. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I think from councillor Madison's statement, firstly, this decision was made by the council, the last name of the council, we merged those committees together. There's no reduction in size of the committees and there's no increased delegation to any one other than the committee. And for members of the public information, these committees consist of all of the councillors, so there's really no difference in decision-making. The way we ran down here simply saves time and energy in office producing two agendas instead of one. There's no change to decision-making whatsoever. The council's already taken that decision, Mister Mayor, I'll ask you to smooth over.
Chair, I would just like to put back to councillor Gallagher on this. It does state that the reduction in the size of the committees will have no detrimental effect, and if one looks at the standing orders under the public question participation, the rules of debate do say that only one question per committee. Those committees have now reduced, so therefore instead of three questions, it's now two. Thank you.
Now, the motion's been approved and seconded, and moved forward now. Item four, part B, is to confirm the title and reference of the listed committees as outlined in part one to six.
Mr Mayor, a number of minor changes proposed to the back of the terms of reference for the council committees going forward, as members will see outlined in their papers. Firstly, the terms of reference of the previous Consilience Committee and Recreation Committee have simply been combined to provide for the new merged committee. And secondly, the terms of reference of the council's special committee have been expanded to take into account further activities provided by the committee in line with the Freedom of Information policy adopted by the council last December. With that in mind, I have formally moved that the terms of reference for the council committees as outlined in part one to six.
First chair, I would like to move an amendment to councillor Galadon's motion. And I have already spoken on the merge of the policies and resources, facilities and recreation, for which we've taken a vote. However, there are three items on item five B, one, two, six, which I would like to move a motion to add another item, which is the neighbourhood plans. I would ask that the neighbourhood plan, neighbourhood plan committee be established and added as item five B seven, with the terms of reference as the now deconde parish plan, with greater responsibilities for neighbourhood plans and community involvement, with all members of the council to participate. With regard to the special committee, under item B of my motion, I would like to say that this committee should remain as in previous years. The terms of reference of this committee have now been changed for only three members to be selected from a group of nine members to decide on matters brought to this committee, including personnel and freedom of information requests. This is a complete change to the makeup of this committee and again, gives authority or decision-making to a select few. Since 2003, I have actively encouraged members of the majority group to vote onto this committee to members of our group with the right to move and second the motion and have it recorded in any minutes. This new protocol is a backward, non-democratic and cynical proposal for this committee. As a third item to my motion, substitution arrangements should apply to all committees, subcommittees and representation on outside bodies. I would move that each item of my motion be voted on separately and for there to be a named and recorded vote and for me to have the right to speak at the end of this debate. Thank you.
Chair, seconded, and at the risk of being too short, I would like to make one or two comments on our report, neighbourhood meeting. Chair, the committee's terms of reference to list out policies and how this council should use them to interact with the wider community in trying to move our town forward. However, in reality, no matter of any importance, this council takes its leave from Durham County Council. Going forward, this council should become more involved with what matters to the people of Spennymo. Last year's rejection of Durham County Council's local plan by the government inspected is not going to help Spennymo. So it's important we look to help ourselves. Some three years ago, we considered producing a neighbourhood plan, but the chief planner from Durham County Council came along and suggested we should not bother and leave it to them. Naturally, they would want that. Why should they want to listen to a potentially different opinion? Reluctant to take a seat and unfortunately, the local members rejected. In June of last year, the leader of the majority group, councillor Galadon, in his vision, said the council would investigate the feasibility and benefits of creating a neighbourhood plan for Spennymo. And if council believes, and if council believes these benefits to be worthwhile, prepare a neighbourhood plan. In a period when the Durham County plan was rejected, an action that was left was wide open to developers that have no interest in the community, nothing is being brought forward. We have not even vaguely considered a neighbourhood plan. I note to the vision, but nothing's been brought forward. Once again, we have not taken the opportunity to move Spennymo forward. We must create a neighbourhood plan and through it, help influence existing projects such as Festival Walk and Durham Gear and bring forward new ones that challenge the shortfalls of the town. We should be taking the lead on some projects instead of being led. To do this, we should, as councillor Madison's moved, create a separate committee, named the neighbourhood plan, set an agenda and work on that agenda. Spennymo is building new houses at the rate of a hundred and fifty a year, with currently over two thousand to build. Using current reset rates, this is adding thirty thousand a year to our income, which means in ten years, assuming we don't increase our council tax, we will have an additional three hundred thousand pounds worth of income, taking our income to one point five B and more. We are not a small parish council. We should have more to influence and share our own priorities.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. I'd like to give you my good time now, but...
Well, if you're chatting, I'm going to go.
Um, who've been there? Do you have anything in support of your second councillor, councillor Madison's? Who's here? Who's here seconded? Who want to vote on your amendment?
Yes, Chair, I would like to have opportunities to comment at the end of the debate. My motion, councillor Galadon, I'm taking my motion.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, if councillor Madison called for a second debate and she wants to reply to her debate, she just want to push a vote for him?
Chair, before we put...
Councillor Madison should be able to...
I would like your chair to speak, Chair.
If councillor Madison moves to speak now, she ends the debate and I cannot speak. I do feel tonight, I'm afraid, that the opposition party are trying to hijack this agenda somewhat. We've come here to, as the item reads, to confirm that the terms of reference of the voting committees will not be able to discuss adding or subtracting extra committees. Those are decisions for the standing committees to make at a later date. Quite rightly saying that I have the look on the feasibility of neighbourhood planning in the council vision, that is something that we're committed to doing and we will do that, and that will come before the Policy and Resources Committee. As I said, I've been in my stage earlier, we fully intend to have completed that council vision back end of this civic year, but I won't support any amendments today because that's not the way to help you, councillor Galadon.
Let's turn. I do believe it is our right at this meeting to add any additional committees that we feel is appropriate, and I do feel it is our right to have a motion presented whereby this is voted upon. With regard to the neighbourhood plan, what I would like to say here is this council leaning on the production of a neighbourhood plan rather than before us at Durham County Council. We have a lot of requests from the community that we should consider as a council, and I would request that on each of the sections of the motion as presented, as I have requested, that we do take a named and recorded vote and have this put into the minutes. Thank you.
Now, we're going to vote on the amendment, supported by councillor Madison, again, if I can be contacted by the council. If you're all in favour, please show.
Chair, would you like me to walk through the...
Hold in the face show. The amendments followed, councillor Madison, who returned the original motion to the board and approved it seconded, hold on, please show.
Well, you voted, Mayor. I'd like to say that the amendment failed, so therefore, we don't need any votes.
Thank you.
Chair, I did request a name of the honourable members and not the subject.
So we're moving on down, or... Right, we'll say amend. Members have been circulated the list of nominations received from board group leaders. The members' intelligence, they intend to take these items together.
Agreed. Mr Mayor, perhaps this might be the only thing that we agree on tonight, but I have moved in over the last two years to provide the opposition party with a much representation on these committees that they asked for. I would just say that for the third year of me running through this agenda item, we've ended up with a list of nominations in front of all members and I'm pleased with that. And I move that the list of nominations be accepted.
Second. Can I take a word from the motion leader? All in favour, please show. You have...
Thank you.
Item six. Item six, representation of outside bodies, again, members have been circulated the schedule of nominations received from board group leaders.
Mr Mayor, I'd like that for the majority of these outside bodies, the correct number of nominations have been due, we say, can I move that the schedule of nominations we say is confirmed, with the exception of the Spennymo Youth and Community Association? Given that there are more nominations received and available representation, a further move of considered representation on that body separately.
All in favour, the leader's motion of the schedule of nominations received for representation outside bodies, except the body where additional nominations should be received, that's accepted.
Agreed.
Agreed. Can I now ask members to consider nominations for representation on the Spennymo Youth and Community Association?
Mr Mayor, can I nominate councillor Patlock as the council's representative on the Spennymo Youth and Community Association?
Chair, I would propose councillor Jeff Darts to this group.
I'll take that, Chair. Councillor Madison's movement amendment has been seconded, that councillor Darts has nominated for the Spennymo Youth and Community Association, and I take an vote on these amendments, all in favour? The amendment's followed, so we must vote the original motion and be laid out that the representative on the Spennymo Youth and Community Association, councillor Patlock, all in favour, please show. If I can do with the motion is passed, therefore, it's confirmed that the representative on the Spennymo Youth and Community Association is councillor Patlock. I have the seconding on the agenda, which is to approve the cycle of meetings for the ensuing year. Members' agreement has been circulated and proposed schedule.
Mr Mayor, I move that the cycle of meetings be approved as per circulated.
It's been moved and seconded that the cycle of meetings be approved. Can I ask members to agree?
Agreed.
Item B, is to appoint Cheksky and I, here, is to appoint Signet Rees for the council's general account.
Mr Mayor, I move that the Signet Rees for Cheksky has printed on the schedule of nominations previously circulated.
It's been moved and printed, the Signet Rees for Cheksky has printed on the circulated schedule, can I ask members to agree?
Agreed.
Item B, is to appoint Trustase for the Mayor's charity field.
Mr Mayor, I move the Trustase has printed on the schedule of nominations previously circulated.
It's been moved and seconded that the Party members for Cheksky has printed, has printed on the scheduled schedule, can I ask members to agree?
Agreed.
Item nine, standing orders, members have requested to approve the amendment standing orders.
Mr Mayor, there are a number of amendments highlighted within the draft standing orders to approve of the tonight's meeting. Also, these amendments serve to correct the missions made in previous years that adopted standing orders, making them correctly refer to yourself and your deputy of the town, your deputy town mayor, as opposed to chairman and vice-chairman of the council. Others are made proposed by the health normal standing orders to which this council largely prescribes. A notable change to be made to the standing orders, which I every say queries about, is the removal of the phrase "at the chairman's discretion". The reason for this change is one stringlining rather than anything else, as section, as standing order twenty seventeen provides for the integrity of the standing orders, that the chairman of the main holds a final decision on how each of the standing orders are handled. With that, Mr Mayor, a formal move that the amendment standing orders are accepted.
I would just like to make a comment here, that has been mentioned earlier, and councillor Galadon didn't seem too concerned, but my item thirteen, the public questions, and asking them once, we have to offer on four standing committees to two standing committees. Each committee was allowed to ask a public question, maybe not important to some people here, but important to people who sit in the gallery week after week. So I suggest that we have two questions, first standing committee, so that we still keep the same number, sorry, I move two questions, first standing committee, so we still keep the same number of questions that the public can ask.
Chair, I don't take home with the insinuation, I don't care about public questions, it's just not true. I understand the issue that councillor Thompson has raised here, that we have half the committees that makes perfect sense without one more question, if that's something that could be facilitated within the main. I have no... In support of the amendment, I have that, well, thank you.
Financial regulations, members have requested to approve the amendment financial regulations.
Mr Mayor, just again, know that some minor changes are proposed, which are all in line with the guidance we say to the main. These are highlighted for members within the papers for tonight's meeting, do not represent any large variations in the financial regulation of this authority. As such, I move that the council formally accept these financial regulations as outlined in the...
Mr Chair, under the financial regulations, this is a complex area that requires further debate under the internal audit plan, and I request all changes to these regulations to be covered by the internal auditor as part of this review. I move such and request a named and recorded vote on this. We do have issues as regards to the standing orders, financial regulations, which we've got to draw on later, and I think that this is failing, we will turn this to an audit internal audit.
Chair, there's no harm in getting our internal audit to look for the financial regulations, he has already made consular in the proposal today, so I'll have to get it.
What is the amendment? All in favour, please show. The amendment was discussed. Item eleven, scheme of delegation, members have requested to review the scheme of delegation. The amendment is measured, it should be noted, there are no changes proposed to this company.
Mr Mayor, quite right, there are no proposed changes to the current scheme of delegation and I'll not accept this, can I move that the council accept it?
It's moved and seconded, the scheme of delegation is approved, can I ask members to agree?
Agreed. Agreed.
Item twelve, data protection policy, members have requested to review the data protection policy, again, for members' information, which you noted that no changes have been proposed to this document.
While the government, Mr Mayor, they thought that I would move that the council approve the continuation of this policy.
Remove the seconded, the data protection policy is approved, can I ask members to agree? Agreed. Item thirteen, free information policy, members have requested to approve the amended free information policy.
Certainly, Mr Mayor, we've come to the last policy for the council's approval tonight's meeting, which is slightly amended free information policy than the document which was adopted by the council in December of last year. The amendment simply prescribed that a panel of three members from the council's special committee, containing at least one member of each of the political groups where possible, can convene and determine an internal review on the hand of a free information request. This amendment has been proposed to allow for greater flexibility in responding to requests for internal reviews and to maximise the availability of councillors for this purpose. I move that the amended policy be adopted.
First chair, would you want to approve the information policy? I do move that changes to this policy be referred to the internal audit for a review and sort of ask for amendment recorded vote.
Put here, the amendment being proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. Put it again, please show. The amendment's fallen, so we'll have the original motion, all in favour, please show. So this chair has a lot of special from the next one. Yes. Thank you, I think we look to this in the meeting, I'm happy to have the meeting closed in the back, yes, you want to go to the main hall, you put the chair from five minutes ago. Thank you.